I make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Okay. Approval of the minutes, we all received that here some time ago. Any corrections or addition to the prior meeting minutes? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Aye.
Carries. Public hearings. The first one is V 2021-8, as shown, variance detached accessory building in the R2 zone outside of the rear, one-third of the rear yard at 529 West Alcott.
Good evening, planning commissioners. As the chair said, this case is for 529 West Alcott Avenue. The applicant is just shown to construct a detached accessory building, a 30 by 30 garage outside of the rear one-third of the rear yard under the current accessory building ordinance. This is an aerial image of the subject property, which is highlighted in blue, and the existing garage is visible to the south of the property there. And then this is a zoning map, so this, whoops, how did I do that? This subject property is zoned R2 and is surrounded by R2 zoning as well, which is the one and two family residence district. The proposal, as stated, is to build a 30 by 30 detached garage outside of the rear one-third of the rear yard, and the applicant provided in your packet a drawing of the proposed placement, and staff have just overlaid that on the aerial imagery. So that existing building will be demolished, and the property owner would like to have the proposed garage in this location in order to drive straight in and out. So if you see here, this is where the garage currently opens, to the west here, and placing the garage here would allow to drive in and out access into the alley. And this is this property's only vehicular access through this alley. You can see that there is a property here that does have a curb cut onto Alcott. However, this property is actually landlocked and does not have access to the alley, so that's the difference there. And this structure, the proposed structure here, would be set back approximately 23 feet from the rear property line, approximately three feet, or a little bit more, based on the calculation that I took, using reference point of just putting it exactly pretty much north to the existing structure. So they would be meeting the setback requirements for the R2 zone for detached accessory structure, which is three feet from the rear and three feet from the side property line. So that means that the only variance requested for this project is that rear one-third of the rear yard. Everything else complies with the ordinance. Excuse me, this masks sometimes. There were no public inquiries or comments that were received prior to publishing the staff report, and there were no public comments that were received after publishing the staff report prior to 4:30 PM today. And information was shared with the building official, engineering department, and fire department, and no staff comments were received. And the notice was published in the Daily Journal on September 18th, and the notice was mailed to property owners within 350 feet, which represented 53 property owners of 67 parcels on September 16th. The proposed findings are shown on the screen, and they are also included in the staff report. They include the practical difficulty of the fact that the vehicular access is only through this narrow alley, and the proposed garage itself will not be any more visible from Alcott Avenue than the current structure is. And so therefore, it still meets the general purpose of the zoning code for having that structure in the rear one-third of the rear yard. And the variance is for more than economic considerations, because constructing that garage to have that drive-in and drive-out access into the alley wouldn't be possible under the current ordinance. And with that, our staff is recommending approval of the variance, based on those findings, with the two following conditions: that the structure would be painted to match the primary structure of the facade, which is our current ordinance stipulation, and of course, must abide by all building code regulations pertaining to the construction of the accessory structure. And I am available if you have any questions, and the applicant is also available in the audience today as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Does the commission have any questions for Karen before we open up the public hearing? If not, we'll open the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak, just go up to the microphone, state your name and address, or you don't have to, but if you like. Okay? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissions.
I make a motion to approve with the conditions that Karen has suggested.
I will second that.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Any other discussion? If not, we need to roll call, or... All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is zoning map amendment. I'll turn it over to you, Karen.
All right. So this final public hearing for tonight is a city-initiated rezoning. It is of 1793, 1813, 1817, and 1825 of Shoreview Drive, also known as lots 5 through 8 of Pebble Lake Estates. And the current zoning is R4, multiple-family residential district, with a proposed rezoning of R1, one-family residence district. And this is an aerial image of the property, so the lots that are to the east here of Shoreview Drive are single-family detached residences, and these lots are currently undeveloped, but with some proposed actions taking place. So this is our current zoning map here. That bright green is our RA agricultural zone. If you remember from the previous map, this is basically DeLagoon Park, with Pebble Lake over here. R1 is our one-family residence district. Those were the detached homes that you saw, and these are the subject properties in blue, representing the R4, multiple-family residence district. So just as some history for this area of Fergus Falls, the subdivision, the land in the subdivision was annexed in 1987 and was platted in 1993. So the subject property is lots 5 through 8, and this larger parcel to the west here, at one point, were owned by Lutheran Brethren Homes. And there was a project, I believe, proposed at one time that would have required that R4, multiple-family zoning, but that project did not proceed at some point, and the land was sold in 2016 and 2017. And so, that's sort of how we ended up with this kind of different zoning, based on the other patterns that are going on in this area. So I'm just going to flip back here really quick. So this is the R1 and the R4. And so, the reason that we have this proposal taking place, it was spurred by some recent folks who were looking to build a accessory structure on lot 5 here. They would be also the property owners of lot 4, and the solution would be to combine those lots, but they would then have different zoning, which we've dealt with in this planning commission, you know, kind of dealing with some of those cleanups that didn't happen throughout the years, and how messy that can kind of end up being unintentionally. So that was spurring that. And then there was also some proposed development for these parcels. So these three parcels are owned by the same property owners, and they were looking to construct a home as well, and possibly needing to combine some lots in order to make that happen. So essentially, the development that's kind of closing out these last few lots here is of that single-family detached nature. And since they haven't been built yet, it just kind of makes sense to come in and clean that up a little bit before, you know, we put some structures there. So this is just a very crude drawing in our GRS of showing that proposed R1 zoning, once that process would be completed if approved at Planning Commission and City Council. And no public inquiries or comments were received as of publishing the staff report or after publishing the staff report prior to 4:30 today, and information was shared both internally with the building official, engineering, fire department, and a notice was also sent to the Minnesota DNR, since it is within 1,000 feet of a shoreline overlay with Pebble Lake. And no comments were received. And as with the other case, the notice was published in the Daily Journal on September 18th, with the notice being mailed out to property owners on September 16th to 11 property owners. And the proposed findings are shown on your screen and also included in the staff report. And again, just as a summary, that this R1 zoning is pretty much a cleanup action that's just reflecting the zoning, the actual development that's going on in this area. With that, R1 zoning that's present right across Shoreview Drive, this isn't a spot zone or anything like that. And with that, our staff is making the recommendation of approval of the rezoning request. And just as a reminder, as it's stated in the staff report, rezonings cannot be approved with conditions. So I'm available for any questions you may have, and one of the property owners is also in the audience as well.
Okay. Any questions for Karen from the commission?
My question would be, why are we leaving that little strip in there, R4, and not zoning everything on the north side of Shoreview Drive?
Do you mean this one?
That strip there, yeah.
This one? So this was just sort of the property owners that were in contact with us. This parcel, I'm not quite sure what's going on with that one.
I just thought it'd be, clean it up and make it all R1 would make sense, but maybe not.
Any other?
I have no.
Then we'll open up the public hearing, if anybody would like to speak. Okay, doesn't look like it, so we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What are your wishes?
I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve? We have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Posed. Motion carries. Any new business?
Unless the commission has any new business.
Okay. Old business, ordinance update?
Yes. So... In your packet, and also printed out for you, there was the memo that went out with the packet relating the ordinance updates. And so the cover memo kind of walks through some questions that I was hoping to walk through today, particularly regarding the older ordinance update of the permitted and conditional uses, accessory buildings, and fences, and then just sending folks again to that rooming house proposal from last time, that folks wanted a little bit more time to walk through. And then I've also printed out, there is the proposed ordinance that's highlighted in yellow that's dated today, related to the accessory buildings and fences and uses, and also that original quote-unquote from May 2021. And that one is 524, that's...
Can I interrupt you? What's in yellow that we're supposed to have? Sorry.
Yep, the yellow one is the one that was dated 9/27, so that's like the proposed final, or what's under consideration for this evening. Was attached to the planning commission memorandum.
Well, in red, maybe. Is it this one?
Yep, the front should be, yep.
Well, the front has a yellow highlight. Okay, thank you. I was looking for yellow paper. Sorry.
No worries. And then the one behind it has 524 highlighted in blue, so that was the original that the planning commission had wanted to sort of work off of.
I appreciate your memo. Can I ask you a question on it?
Sure, yeah.
Is that okay?
Yep.
I just need to find it again. Right now I have too many papers. When we talked about pole buildings, it looks like we're including pole buildings and prefab. And my only concern with that is, in this day and age, there's like prefab garages, like prefab sheds. Like if someone brings in a Menard shed, that's a, you know, $4,000 shed, are they going to need a conditional use permit?
Sure. So I was working off of the minutes from the last meeting, which included prefabricated, and so if, you know, the commission has thought about it, you know, and thinks that that's not a good idea, then we can strike that.
I'm fine with it. That just, that crossed my mind, reading it going, okay, that's probably a shed, and now they're going to have to pay a fee to bring in a shed, and most sheds are prefab.
So as it's written, that situation would require a conditional use permit.
That seems like a whole heck of a lot of work for staff to bring in a shed that's probably sold 10 times a weekend at Home Depot or Fleet Farm.
I would not disagree.
Yeah, because those are common.
I mean, I'd be fine going with just pole buildings, I guess, personally. Are you comfortable with that?
Yep, and it's an easy fix if the commission is fine with me just striking it before sending it on to council, if they, you know, decide everything else looks good or make those other changes. You know, I think that's something that we could just make those little simple tweaks before sending it on to the city council.
And to me, I think saying the eight-foot-high fence and clarifying that that's on the property line abutting, or adjoining, or however the legal word is, to the non-residential area. And I also thought, maybe do we insert agriculture as also being allowed for that height, or just business and industrial?
So I would say that with the, are you referring to the RA zone?
Yeah.
With the RA zone, that may not necessarily be a property that's in agricultural use. It could just be a single-family detached home that has no agriculture occurring on it. There may be something that we could look into, you know, for how to address that certain situation, but off the cuff, that would sort of be my reaction.
But they could ask for a variance if they wanted to do a higher fence abutting to an agricultural area?
They could.
I guess I'd be fine. I was just curious. I'd be fine leaving it the way it is, too. But I think saying, calling out that lot line specifically would be logical, if the other commissioners agree. For number five on your memo, do you think, where are you thinking building and structure need to be changed in the 9/27 version, or is it changed already?
It's changed in 9/27. Or it's sort of... So a few of these, they might use structure only, they may use building or structure. So I think it's just sort of, would we like to use one over the other? Would we like to say both? You know, so for example, a structure, an example would be like a plate swing set. That's a structure. And so that would now start to apply all of those lot calculations to that object.
Can we just use building across the board?
So that's what the current ordinance is, and that would be something that is completely enclosed, shed, garage, things of that nature.
So not necessarily like a gazebo? That would be...
Right.
Okay.
A gazebo is...
Not enclosed.
In theory, you know...
Right, open air.
Open air.
I guess I personally would be fine with using building across the board.
Yep, I'd agree.
Ryan, are you good with that?
I'm sorry?
Are you good using the word "building"? Can we use "building"? Is that good with you?
Yeah, we'll go along with it.
Okay. On 154091A1, I don't know why I'm squealing, that exception for existing accessory structures, that's not accessory structures as of today. That could be a garage that's built two years from now that then they want to attach. Is that accurate?
So...
154091A1, so...
Yeah, exception for existing accessory buildings. You know, I wasn't here during the initial discussions, but if you handed me this, you know, and asked me to apply it to a certain situation, it doesn't have a specific date in it. So if I, you know, build a garage in the future and I want to attach it to the house, you know, I'm able to have those different requirements for setbacks and things.
I think that's good.
Is there a separate ordinance part then for the structures? Because what if somebody, like the gazebo example, what if somebody did want to put a gazebo on? Are they still having to... Is there a separate ordinance they would have to comply with for accessory structures?
Right. So not necessarily for that. You know, because it's not really the primary use either, so in that situation, we wouldn't necessarily make them, you know, follow the same rules like if you were building a house. So it becomes one of those kind of in-between...
Is movable? Like you can move that, or what makes it... Or it's not...
So it's just by definition, right? It's the fact that, it's where it gets to be a little complex, right, with the definitions? So our zoning codes, some zoning codes don't necessarily call out the difference between that, you know, for a building versus a structure.
Do you guys get a lot of complaints for playsets that our neighbors don't like and things like that, or is that kind of been a non-issue?
You know, as far as something like a gazebo or something like that, I'd have to talk to Jason or April, but, you know, I think it's mostly when lot lines are in question, is a lot of the issues that we hear about.
I guess I would make a motion to move forward with this with changing everything to building, stating, taking out the prefabricated structures, and clarifying that the eight-foot fence height is acceptable on however legally it needs to be put in their line that is with an industrial or business district only on the property. And changing the two changes you mentioned in four, to not have it appear in the ordinance twice. That would be my motion, I guess.
Kate, we have a motion.
I'll second.
It's been seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Kate passes.
Thank you for all your work on this.
Yep.
Right, yeah. So I will send this on to Lynn for city council. I know sometimes they're able to run concurrently. I'm not sure if that will be the case this time. It may take, long and short of it, it may take two city council meetings, it may take three. But after that point, it would be effective 15 days after it would be published in the Daily Journal. So about two months, these ordinance will be in effect, so essentially next construction season at this point. So we walked through all of those. So the last one, which is, I think, probably still a little bit more for discussion mode tonight, is the rooming house or the group living. So just to go back to the origination of this, this was the Welcome House Group, who came a couple of meetings ago, and they were, at the time, looking to have some housing for women who were pregnant or may have small children or both, and they were looking to purchase an R1 property, and the issue was that they would have too many people living in the home for the zoning district, the R1 zoning district. And so, this is sort of how we were kind of looking at what other cities have done for, you know, using perhaps a single-family residential structure and converting it into housing multiple families, and how some of that has, you know, been done elsewhere. So for last meeting, there was some information provided, basically of around Minnesota, some larger cities that may have had kind of a similar use and how they had done it. And one request of the planning commission was to maybe expand that search a little bit, just sort of nationwide to see what other options are out there. I can't say that I really found anything too different from what already kind of seen within big cities like Minneapolis or St. Paul. But I just have this little summary on this slide here of things that the planning commission could consider when they were drafting or reviewing one of the proposed ordinances. So these are things that I saw, you know, I would say that it really ranged from a lot of regulation to kind of even just simple one-sentence definitions, this is a use, this is where it's allowed. But in those instances, where there was some law regulation, these were the types of things that you kind of saw over and over again. Some limiting the spacing of facilities, so between, you know, two registered uses. The zoning district, we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting, they do tend to be restricted to commercial mixed use or those higher residential density zones, not necessarily those lower density zones like a single or two-family residence district. There was often a mention of size of the actual rooming unit. Typically, it couldn't be more than 400 square feet. There was often a maximum number of people per room that were allowed, usually two. Some did dictate, kind of trying to manage that density, placing requirements on the size of the lot, or at the very least saying that a project had to mirror the underlying density of its underlying zoning district, requiring a management that to be on-site, or at least to submit a management plan, and also determining a minimum length of stay, just in order to, I think in a lot of places in California, to prevent against that tourist use, but also just to sort of reflect that it's still a housing type, kind of even if it's month-to-month or short-term, that that's its intention. This did, not sure if it's as large as I thought, but this was just an example, I would say pretty typical of the California zoning ordinances that I saw. So it's just all of those dimensional standards and considerations that are reflected in the zoning ordinances. And there was another example from Montgomery County, Maryland. So they had different standards based on the number of units. So they have performance standards, if you have less than 50 living units or more than 50 units, this is the additional standards for the 50 units. This is the additional standards for the 50 units. Some alternative routes that I saw in my research, we talked a little bit about this last meeting as well. One solution that St. Paul had was they changed their definition of a family. And I had included this because at the time, the organization's barrier was the fact that, you know, the children were not obviously related to the other children in the home. And so, but at this time, I think they've shifted their clientele a little bit. But Denver also made a similar change. Their zoning code actually, prior to 2020, only allowed two unrelated individuals to live together. They were proposing kind of a little bit more change, up to five unrelated people. And you could live up to 10 people as long as your finished space had a certain square footage. That did not look to pass. The only thing that looked to be changed in their zoning code was increasing the number of unrelated people from two to five in a household. And this one's, you know, maybe a little bit more kind of mirroring what Minnesota statute already has and what our zoning code already has, which was essentially saying, we don't care if you're an actual licensed care facility that's providing nursing care as long as you're somehow substantially similar to that and what those look like. You just follow those same requirements of those state-licensed facilities. So in our zoning code, that would allow a facility serving six or fewer in any residential zone, or business or industrial, without the need for a CUP. And serving seven or more would require that CUP. So I thought I would just toss it back to the commission here for any discussions or questions or things that you've thought of in the last month since we met on this topic. Thank you.
So did we, how does Matthew House compare to this? I mean, just out of curiosity.
Sure, so Matthew House is a little bit of the fact that they do serve, it's my understanding that it's kind of a halfway house, sober house. And so they do kind of meet that definition of serving the clientele as, as the chemical dependency is one of those stated disabilities. And I think also there's, as we discuss, sometimes, you know, these uses might just show up. And, and I think that there was a little bit of both in this situation. So at, at the time, you know, for the, the proposed use of women and children, you know, it wasn't quite with that definition of, of the disabilities. There may be some people who did qualify for that, but it, you know, wouldn't obviously be their, their whole, whole mission.
So is Matthew House licensed? We have no idea. I don't want to go there, never mind, just, I didn't ask.
I did check state licensing. They are not listed as a licensed facility.
We don't need to go there.
Okay.
Sorry I asked. I, this whole thing makes, I just, I feel like it's hard.
It's a lot to unpack. I agree.
Yeah.
So some of my thoughts, if you were done.
No, I'm done. I just, I don't know.
May, may I be heard as well? So I, I like your list here, because these are the things that we need to work on defining and details we need to work out. But I, would it be best to work out those things first and then decide what the strategy is? Because there's, there's some different strategies we could use, right? So it could be redefining family, it could be requiring the conditional use permit, it could be defining adding rooming house. So there, there are different ways we could.
Yep, absolutely.
Go about it.
Mm-hmm.
One of the things that I would like to see is either to have to have the conditional use permit, because I give, think that gives the city some control over some safety issues. And I think that, just like apartment owners, like if somebody buys a house and they're going to rent it out or have it as apartments, they have to register with the city and pay, I think it's just like $50 or something. That helps us from a prosecution standpoint of knowing who's there, if there's a fire, if there are crimes there, who owns the building, if it's in shambles or there's a safety risk. So I would like to see some sort of a conditional use permit and/or a requirement to register so that the city is aware of what's going on with the use.
So I, I agree with everything you're saying. I'm just questioning, like, if we have five college kids living in the same house, we want them registering? You know what I mean? Like, how are we going to draw the line between a rooming house and? I, I'm not challenging, I'm just trying to figure out where the happy medium is.
If I could cut in. The, and I, I totally respect the commissioner's point about, you know, not tying ourselves to, to the one, you know, proposed ordinance. But there was in the definition essentially what a rooming house is not. And it was a very long list. And it would include things like dormitories, fraternities, sororities. You know, so in this particular example, which again, we don't need to, to keep, but I guess my point is just that we can address those concerns. You know, so in this proposed rooming house, you know, it's operated by a nonprofit government or healthcare agency. So you can, you can put parameters on it, right, about whatever we end up defining what it is. You know, we can, we can address that.
So, and that's a good point. I agree with what Kelsey's saying. But my concern is, what if we have some entity that's not a nonprofit, a government, or a healthcare agency? Then they don't fall underneath this, so then do we still get our conditional use permit? And I would say they wouldn't.
So I think that what we want to keep in mind is sort of the, the reason that we're doing this and who we're doing it for. And, and so it's, it's to make sure, you know, that this use is allowed in, in certain situations. So the question, I think, to you would be, do you want someone that is not agency XYZ being able to do this use? And if not, then it's okay that they don't have a path. If that makes sense.
My concern is, is if it's a for-profit versus a nonprofit that's basically operating like a nonprofit could, but it happens to be a for-profit company coming in and doing it. That's where I'm struggling with, where do they fall then?
Like if they're doing it for philanthropy?
Right, or, or the goodness of their heart, but there is, it's a for-profit, you know what I mean? Like, who knows? They, they could be charging, or it could end up being government subsidized program and some, I mean, who knows?
So I would just maybe clarify that the, the act of, of someone paying rent does not necessarily mean that the organization is considered for-profit.
Right.
Yeah.
I just, I think working through that list like Kelsey suggested is a good idea, because I think everything else seems really broad right now, and we have to narrow down what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, because we need to work out all those details and then what are overlying. I don't know what's best, to, to figure out what our, what our strategy is first and then put those things in place, or talk about this first and that'll help us suss out the direction we want to go.
I mean, I struggle honestly with putting rooming houses in like R1, or, yeah, R1, R2. I, to me, they're more R3, R4 things. But we have a lot of R1, R2, so we're excluding a lot of areas, too. I mean, it's, I struggle with it.
Group homes are R1s, right?
Yeah, and I think they're excluded because they're allowed anywhere due to disability, right?
So the group home depends on the number of people. So if you went today to the state of Minnesota and you pulled the list of group homes in Fergus Falls, you would see that probably 95% of them are licensed for six or fewer, because that is the state statute that says you must allow it in any residential zone.
And I mean, and I would argue that there are group homes that have gone up that don't help the neighborhood. I mean, that are in newer neighborhoods and things like that, and it's not always positive.
My concern with this would be that we don't end up with another situation like we had with someplace Safe, where they were coming up by taxi from the Twin City area. And I was on the Public Safety Committee at the time, and we were having some problems in town with that situation. And I'd hate to see it getting opened up again.
Was that with other organizations bringing victims of abuse for safe housing?
I'm sorry.
Was, was that for, I, I wasn't here then. Was that in regards to other organizations bringing people for safety from abusive situations?
Well, it, it was for abusiveness and so on and so forth, where they would be, need a safe place to be. And we had vacancies here, and they didn't have vacancies in the cities. And it had to be opened up statewide. And so we ended up with a number of them up here. They'd come up by taxi and. So that'd be my only concern, that.
And. I under, I understand.
How do you think we should move forward?
I think there's a lot of ways. I, I think that really drilling down if, if these items are, you know, if they look like things that you want to dig into, if you think that there's others. I'm not really sure, you know, if this is how the planning commission has done this in the past. These are conversations that are not always easy to have in, in this back-and-forth setting. And they can also add a little bit of time to the process. And so I'm not sure if the planning commission has done this in the past, but it seems to me that perhaps, you know, maybe forming a subcommittee to work on this with, you know, some members to, to do some, some soul-searching, for lack of a better word, some additional thinking, and, you know, maybe working with staff to, to come up with something to bring back in, you know, a, a two months or so, might be an option. I'm not, Ralph's not here, so, you know, maybe he will tell me this is a horrible idea tomorrow morning, but that's tomorrow morning.
That's fine. The last couple of meetings, it's been, you know, like the four of us. Are the others kind of still engaged and just not able to come? Or we've had a lot of just the four of us? So I mean, a subcommittee is great, but is the reality, we are the subcommittee? I, I'm, I'm not trying to be rude, I'm just.
Well, it should be one less of you, so you're not a quorum.
Yes.
I won't.
But a subcommittee probably makes sense, because you've got detailed stuff that needs to be thought about. And then bring, I think it's good to bring it back to committee after some serious thoughts been put on by whatever, what the subcommittee is.
I don't know what the, the rules are, but is it? Are we ever allowed to have a subcommittee of a few members of the planning commission and a few members of city council?
No.
Or is that not allowed?
I don't know.
Isn't that getting into that public meeting stuff?
I don't know why that wouldn't be allowed, though, because it's two separate entities, so it would be.
And they may have the same questions and the same concerns. And if it's going to go to them afterwards, maybe we could save everybody a lot of repeat and grief if it was something that.
That's a really good idea.
We need to check on that, because I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely check on it. I don't think either of us has an answer at this moment, but.
I can't think of any reason it wouldn't be allowed, but that doesn't mean anything, so.
Well, I see if that's allowed, I think that's, maybe that'd be the way to go.
Yeah. We can find, we'll find that out, or then we'll talk to council members, too, and see who might be interested.
Okay.
Good.
I like that idea.
Is anyone volunteering to be on a subcommittee yet?
I will volunteer.
Okay, we got one.
Let me know. Yeah, she, we'll go for it.
That's a really subcommittee.
Although, it's probably, you know, Kelsey would be great as the one.
That's right.
Really sub.
Yes, I, I think at least two would be preferred.
Okay, so one of you two is.
Yeah, well, we could figure that out.
Yeah, right, yeah, cool.
Okay.
Great.
The dairy site survey.
Yes, so just by the way of staff updates, I will say that for next meeting, October, well, I better not say it in case if I'm on. But in October, we have one public hearing case, a rezoning request by Otter Tail Power Company. You may recall earlier this summer that when the power company came for the conditional use permit for the solar farm, there were two parcels that are just off of Main that were R1 zoning, and the solar farm use is not allowed there. And so they are coming back to rezone those parcels, just to make that a cohesive project site. Just as a reminder, the CUP is not currently attached to those parcels. If they would ever like to put equipment on those parcels, they would need to come back to either attach the CUP to those parcels, or, you know, add the CUP and modify the existing CUP. But the rezoning request at least is coming to the next meeting. And we did not have the final plat for Timber Cove this month, which was the HRA plat. So hoping that next month, they'll be able to come in and with that final plat project. Otherwise, before you go, after you adjourn here. So first of all, when I say the Dairy Site Dairy Project, we're all, got the mental map? Perfect, okay. So the Port Authority has spent some MPCA bonding, all sorts of many public funds and grants to clean up that site and remediate it. That work should be complete within the next month or so. And so we're now starting to look forward to the RFP, Request for Proposal, stage to redevelop the dairy site. And so we made a little survey that we gave to the Port Authority members, and now we're asking you to fill that out as well. That just talks about what uses might be a good consideration for the site and, and things of that nature. So it's only two-page, you know, one page, front and back, eight questions, very short. And so if you could just fill that out before you leave today, it would be greatly appreciated. But that's all I have on Dairy Site.
Some of.
Oh, can I?
No, no.
Sorry, sorry, never mind. When we're exploring the option of the subcommittee regarding the group living update, it might also, and I don't know what we would call it if it still would be a subcommittee, but I think it might be worth asking, if we do that, could we also ask maybe some representatives from some of the nonprofits or things like that, who may be the ones who use the ordinance, to also come so that we could get some feedback about language that would be helpful for them, for grants and things like that?
That's a good idea.
Sure.
When you ask the powers that be.
Yeah, yeah.
Ask that question as well, please.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Now I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That adjourned.
Do we have, I didn't see this, you have the survey, okay.
No, I just wanted to distract people and go, what's this?
We're going to do this while you're talking.